...the Pullman City Council meeting for this Tuesday, July 16th. Do you please call in?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Records.
Present.
Councilmember Sorensen.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Under announcements tonight, first of all, I'd like to welcome, we have 18 students here from Balkan countries, from North Macedonia, Montenegro, Albania, Serbia, and Kosovo. So would you all stand up so everybody can see where you are? Okay. Welcome. That's our international welcome to you tonight. We thank you so much for studying here in the Moore College, and you're doing a number of different studies over across the country. And let me see, you also will be studying journalism and media. It's all part of the study of U.S. initiatives and media and communications. So, thank you very much. You can sit down now. Thank you. Unless you feel like standing for most. Now, it just shows again the international spectrum here of Pullman. Last night, I had a chance to talk to 70 students from Okinawa that are here part of the College of Education. They have an English class, and they're doing here about two to three weeks. So, we were at the Yelson Floyd College building last night. Other announcements tonight, Mayor's Office accepting suggestions through July 31st for City Council goals about emergent issues. More information, you can see the announcement section of our city homepage. You won't have to go far to indulge yourself in shopping urges because Pullman's annual Downtown Crazy Days Sidewalk Sale will be Thursday through Saturday, July 18th through the 20th, open until 8:00 P.M. on Thursday. Neil Public Library has a lot of great programs going on for summer reading right now, and Adam will be reading on Thursday at 10:30. Pullman Parks and Recreation offers a lot of family fun, Wednesday concerts, Rainy Park. Food vendors begin serving at 5:30, music performance at 6:00, Friday movies at Rainy Park start with food, fun at 6:00 P.M., and the Rainy Park Pool is also open. Music on Main is every Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 P.M. downtown Pullman at the High Street Plaza, and Pullman's Fresh to You Farmers Market is open for the season on Wednesdays from 3:30 to 6:30 at the location at Belsford's WSU Visitor Center on East Main and Spring Street. So, those are the announcements tonight. Before we start doing a lot of other council business tonight, we have a presentation, and that is on Mental Health Issues in Pullman by Mike Burney from the Palouse River Counseling Center. Mike, we've had a chance to work with Mike for a good number of years in this community. We certainly appreciate all the service you've been, and I know we have a number of different issues that you'll be talking about tonight. So, Mike, welcome to the council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. As Mayor Johnson said, my name is Mike Burney. I'm from Palouse River Counseling. And really, when I was first asked to speak about mental health issues, my first question was, well, is there something specific about mental health issues? That's a very broad topic. I was talking, just comments with Mayor Johnson again, and saying, almost anything fits under that. And so, really, what I'd like to make sure that I accomplish today is to answer questions that may be utmost in your mind, and so, I can speak on a lot of different topics. I have a few things I'll talk to you just a little bit about, some of the system design changes that are both happening at the state level that impact us, and also just a little bit about the interactions within our Pullman community as well. But please, anytime that something pops to your mind, or that you have an interest or a question about, whether it's mental health or something related to that, please just flag me down, and I'll see if I can answer that, or I'll tell you that I don't know, and I'll find the answer for you. So, with that as kind of a preface, what I'd really like to be able to tell you just a little bit about is that as we get, as we've gotten started with this, actually, let me step back, because the first thing I'd like to do is that you all oversee parts of the Pullman City Government, and I want to just say a special thank you to a couple of the departments that we work pretty closely with. One is the Pullman Fire Department, and they've, just like any other healthcare facility, they have come to our office a few times. They do a wonderful job working with the folks that we work with. But I'd also really like to do a special thank you for the Pullman Police Department, because they really have done, you'll see sometimes in the paper, about interactions between individuals that are mentally ill, usually that have a serious and persistent mental illness, and the police department. And as Mayor Johnson was saying, I've been doing this for quite a number of years, and for all those years, the interactions that we've had when we've asked the police department to come up to our, to our location, either working with a person that's having a particular challenge at that right time, or maybe having some kind of behavioral problem as they're going to work with their counsel. The Pullman Police Officers have just done a wonderful job. They take the time that's needed, they're kind, but they're firm when they need to be. And so, I don't know all the training that they go through, but whatever it is, it seems to be working. And so, a special thank you, and I know that you all oversee that program too. So, just said a little thank you before I get started. Palouse River Counseling is what's called a community, an outpatient community behavioral health center, and all that really means is that we do both mental health services and substance use disorder. It used to be called chemical dependency, but the new term is substance use disorder services. We provide that for almost all ages throughout Pullman and most of Whitman County. We also provide some services to Layton County, and even to a few people from the valley. So, we've done that. We have a whole variety of outpatient services that we do, some that you've seen. I won't spend a whole lot of time with that, because I know our time is limited. What I will say is that one of the first big changes to our part of the system to behavioral health happened with the Affordable Care Act, and we, since the Affordable Care Act came into say, we've doubled in size. And so, we have 52 staff total, and we have 40 clinicians that work with, either in our substance use disorder or in our mental health services. And that's, again, a kind of a whole variety of different services that we provide. A number of things that have been changing recently that impact us is that with, the state has a newest, new initiative, relatively new initiative, called Healthy Washington. And how that impacts behavioral health is that they are making a push to see individuals in, as a whole person. So, working more closely with physical medicine and behavioral health, so we're dealing, we're trying to treat the whole individual, both their behavioral health issues and their physical issues. And so, this, in the state of Washington, this is called Integrated Managed Care, and this is for all, all different pay sources. And so, we have a variety of initiatives that are doing that. In our particular area, we jumped into this a year early in our region, and so, we started January 1st of this year, and so, we are working in a variety of different places to see if we can't be more effective working with the whole individual as we're, as we're working with them. And so, trying to bring behavioral health into more of the general healthcare region. And so, one of the things that we've done is we have a number of projects that we're working with Pullman Regional Hospital around, and some of their clinics that they work with, so both Pullman Family Medicine, it's not part of their clinic network, but Palouse Medical, and also the Whitman Medical Group in Colfax. And so, we've tried a variety of things to make sure that we're working more closely together, and that we know what we're, what each of us are doing as we're trying to work with the whole individual. One of the other changes that we've seen relatively recently, and I don't know about one individual from our law enforcement community, so I'm sure that they deal with this a lot, but over the last year, they changed the Involuntary Commitment Act. It used to be just for people with mental health issues, and now it includes people that have substance use disorder. It has to be a pretty serious substance use disorder, but if they can't take care of themselves, we do have the ability to involuntarily commit that, that individual. Unfortunately, there's only very few spaces where they can go, and so, when those are full, then we're a little bit stuck.
Is it like a 72-hour hold, or is that?
It's a 72-hour hold, yes. It's just like the old mental, well, the current mental health one, too. And then, things have to happen in addition to that. And we can, if that's of interest to people, we can talk a little bit more about the involuntary thing. It's really a very small piece of what we do, but it's, comes to, it comes to people's mind a lot. One of the other areas, I will tell you, one of the things I really enjoy about the Pullman community is that agencies like the one that I work for, people are really much more about partnering and figuring out, how can we work together in order to accomplish something? And so, I mentioned previously that we've, we do a lot of work and have for many, many years with Pullman Regional Hospital. We work a lot with Community Action Center. You know, there's an issue around homelessness and some of those kind of issues. We've worked with Community Action Center for a very long time, and many, many other agencies. That's one of the things I really enjoy about our community, is it's not really a competition kind of thing, it's figuring out, how can we, how can we work together to accomplish things that need to be accomplished? I thought you might be interested in some trends that are occurring in the behavioral health area. One thing I will tell you is, not only are we seeing many more people, but the acuity or the level of distress that people are having when they come to us is much higher than it used to be seven or eight years ago. We work with a variety of folks, but in general, on average, people are sicker when they come to us for a lot of their needs. We've also added to our organization, we've added a number of psychiatric prescribers, because there's a lot more people that seem to need medication as part of their, of our work with them. The other thing that we've seen recently is we've had a number of suicides in our community, so we've been working with a variety of places. We work and have, for quite a number of years, we work closely with the Counseling Center up at WSU. We also see, within our organization, we see a fair number of students within Palouse River Counseling, in addition to those that are seen by the Counseling Center. Also recently, we've been working with, just because she's been keeping a lot of statistics, we started working more closely with County Coroner about, you know, what are some of the things that are driving the suicides? What are some of the things that she's seeing that, you know, maybe causes? And how can we intervene before somebody gets to that place where they feel like the only, the only solution that they have is to, is to leave our planet? So, we see a lot of that. We're also seeing, interestingly enough, some increase in the number of deaths for people that are, have substance use disorder kinds of things, whether it's alcohol, whether it's other kinds of drugs. We've had a few more of those in our community than we've had in the past. One of the things that they did ask me to speak just a little bit about are, what are some of the gaps that we have in our service system? This is not true just for Pullman, but probably the biggest gap that we have in the state of Washington is the access to psychiatric beds. State of Washington is like 45th in the number of psychiatric beds per 100,000 in the country. You all probably follow some of the political things more than I do, but I follow the ones in behavioral health. There's a lot of initiatives recently. The governor's come up with a number of initiatives about how to change how psychiatric beds are provided within the state, and so, there's a lot of activity going on there. We're kind of very early in that process. So, I've talked a lot about kind of the things that I've seen. I'd really be curious if you have particular questions, particular areas of interest that you'd be, that you'd like to ask me, I'd like to speak to those.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. Having a background in psychology and then serving on the Poverty Awareness Task Force, this is near and dear to my heart, and having people who have attempted suicide as friends. What kind of community trainings can, do you provide? This has been something that's been on one of my goals for the city, to provide some training for people that maybe aren't necessarily just police, but people who do come into contact, whether that's, you know, different directors, things like that. Could you provide some info?
You bet. I will tell you, the gold standard for that, and it's, I mean, within the last seven or eight years, it's relatively new, but it's called Mental Health First Aid. It's really, nationwide, it's the gold standard now, and it's kind of, well, not kind of, it's first aid for the mental health. So, it's really geared towards, not professionals, people that are trained in psychology or psychiatry or things like that, but for the kind of individual that would take first aid training, for example. And we've got a number of people that are trained in the, in the community that can do that. That's one of the things that we're working with the coroner on. They have several people in different places in the county that would like to talk more about that, and that's really more of a preventative kind of something. So, if somebody comes on someone that says, you know, I'm so despondent, I don't know that I can keep going with this, well, what do you do if you hear something about that? And so, Mental Health First Aid really helps with that. So, that would be my suggestion.
Any other comments or questions?
I do have one.
Okay.
Sure. So, do you do a lot of outreach in the high schools or elementary schools? I know funding is very limited from the state and so on.
You know, I didn't mention it, but we do, with a number of the school districts within the county, we have contracts, so we can do things specifically that they request. But we work very closely with all the schools. We work closely.
Yeah, Maxwell's here tonight, yes.
They've really worked well with us. You know, they have allowed our counselors to come into the schools and work with people that are already clients of Palouse River Counseling, so we can work with the, with the student, with the teacher. That's really been nice. We've, we work with them very closely in both the middle school and the high school, some elementary school, too. So, we can, that's one of the really nice partnerships that we have, and that's not, other people that I work with in other parts of the state, that's not always necessarily true. Thank you.
From a juvenile standpoint, you still deal with a lot of bullying, victims of bullying? I know that's been one of the concerns. And you talked about the severity of the people you're seeing today compared to what you did, say, five, 10 years ago.
Yeah. You know, with, with the bullying, it's a, it's a whole new realm than, you know, when I was in school or when lots of us were in school, because of all the social media kinds of things. And so, we, we deal with, not necessarily in general way, but a lot of the children that we work with, the children and families, bullying is a component of one of the reasons that they're with us. And so, we do most specifically there and talk about, you know, those kinds of issues, you know, how can you, how can you work with that? How can you adjust to it? But it's really, this cyberbullying and, you know, the using of social media is a big problem, and it's hard to get your hands wrapped around. And so, really, it's a lot of trying to build some resiliency in some of the students that are, I, I imagine the schools, you know, have a lot of work that they do as well.
So, when you meet with your fellow professionals, is there anything that stands out in the Pullman area compared to statewide, or is, are we pretty much in the same mix in terms of things that you treat as opposed to, or something different here with the college population that we have?
Right. You know, that's a good question. I think a lot of them are the same. You know, we don't have, we don't have the level of homelessness that some of the more urban areas do. We have a different substance use disorder kind of profile than a lot of more urban's areas do. We deal, you know, a lot with alcohol, a lot with marijuana, and a lot with, like, you know, Adderall, some of those kind of stimulants, too, that the college students might use. Other people use them as well. But we have a lot of the same issues that other places do. I mean, we all face the shortage of psychiatric beds, and we, when somebody needs, their needs exceed outpatient services, and then, so what do we, you know, how can we work with them as close to our communities as we can? I guess it's both.
Regarding our homeless problem, while it isn't very big, it is growing, and there are actually a lot of youth who are homeless. How do you see the city and your industry collaborating or offering services? I mean, have you seen examples in other communities, or is there, you know, what, how could we do something like that?
You know, we work, and again, I'm probably not the best expert. I can talk about the mental illness part of that. Again, we've worked closely with Community Action Center and some of the homeless things. One of the things we've really found out is, we really can't do much if, until the person's primary needs are taken care of. So, a place to live, you know, some kind of, you know, for food, and some of those most basic needs, you know, we can't really work very much on their behavioral health needs until those are taken care of. And so, our, our case managers really work with our folks a lot about, you know, do you need to get on Section 8? Can we find you a place to live? Can we, you know, do those, you know, do those kinds of things?
Any other questions? Okay.
I just have a comment, and that is, thank you for the service that you provide to the area. It's invaluable, and we appreciate what you do.
Oh, well, thank you.
Very much so. So, with that, thank you again, Mike, for your presentation. I appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you very much for inviting me, and please, if you have any questions afterwards, feel free to give me a call if I can help you with more specifics. I'd be happy to try to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And also, one thing, too, since we always go through the legislature, and we have different things that, that we push as a city, if there are things that, that would affect our residents here that you see from a mental health perspective, that you want support, and Olympia, make sure we know about that, so we can all be on the same page.
I appreciate that. I work with our, our state representatives a lot, but I think coming as a...
And I know Joe Schmuck got something going with the University of Washington in terms of mental health this year, so we have some new program over there.
Right. Yeah, they're working in a number of areas. The University of Washington is working in a number of areas. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine in nature. The councils had a chance to look at them ahead of time. Do I hear a motion read by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, Laura McAlloon, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 9, 2019, and approve them as submitted. A motion to approve dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 96365 through 96491 totaling $3,120,882.95. A motion to approve dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 96492 through 96547 totaling $98,623.23. And a motion to approve dispersments represented by accounts payable checks numbered 539 through 543 totaling $587,791.55. Accounts payable checks numbered 96548 through 96570 totaling $397,132.18. Payroll checks numbered 74745 through 74830 totaling $83,983.43. Electronic transfers 55759 through 56037 totaling $840,884.22. Void of check number 96571. Void of payroll draw check 74737 for $800. And reissue of the same payroll draw check 74744 for $800.
Is there any item the council would like out for discussion? Seeing now the consent agenda consists of items 1 through 4, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to the regular agenda. Tonight, the first item up is a resolution accepting a bid for the Aquatic Renovation System. And that, our deputy public works director, Clay Enforsman.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. The item before you is award of the rainy pool repair and liner replacement contract. This project will remove and replace the vinyl liner in the dive pool, which was originally installed in 1997. Replacement of the liner was included in the 2018 Parks and Paths bond. One bid was received last week on July 9th from Aquatic Renovation Systems Incorporated of Indianapolis, Indiana, for a total price of $182,680.91, which is slightly above the architect's estimate of $181,104. Staff is recommending council award contract 19-07 rainy pool repair and liner replacement to Aquatic Renovation Systems Incorporated. Are there any questions?
Questions of Clay Enforsman.
Just curious why there was only one bid?
Just, it's kind of a specialty.
Okay. It wasn't a short period of time?
It was not. This company actually did the original liner in 1997.
Just, usually, we see a couple, and to see just one is, I mean, I like to see that it's coming in close to our projection, but, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? And do I hear a motion in this resolution?
Move to adopt resolution number R-48-19.
Second.
Moved in second. Laura?
Resolution number R-48-19, a resolution accepting the bid of Aquatic Renovation Systems Incorporated for rainy pool repair and liner replacement project and authorizing execution and delivery of the contract for said project.
All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two tonight is a resolution adopting and proposing route changes for the public transportation system affected with start of 2018/2020 service. Wayne Thompson is our transit director, and we had a presentation of that the last meeting we had here.
We did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This resolution before you authorizes the transit system to operate the routes that were proposed last week at the public hearing. And highlights of, of that package are as follows. The main route change is Golden Hills. The neighborhood, the stop, will move from the Silver Route to the Paradise Route. Silver Route will take on the Walmart Loop on Harvest Drive. The goal of these changes is to have more equal time for both routes at the transfer station, and also to keep the Silver Route on time throughout the majority of the day. We also have a sixth afternoon school bus route. The morning school bus routes, of which there are five, all five will go to the WSU campus as they already do, but instead of randomly short and long shuttles, they'll be consistently assigned express loops, so the students will, will have a more consistent frequency of express routes during the morning, 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. Also, we're adding 10 hours of dialing ride service weekly to the system. That's, that's a long overdue, and the first of more to come, I would hope. One thing I overlooked last week was to touch on some of our technology highlights. The app, phone app, is well-used by the public and by us. We push out a lot of information, and it's relied upon by the public. Google Maps, Google Transit is, is started out as our primary technology means of sharing route information. Seems almost secondary now, but we do have a trip planner, a very useful feature when you visit other towns, and then we now have that as well. We're also looking at a mobile ticketing app, which we're going to do on a trial basis for the rest of the year. It's called Token Transit. It'll be no hardware required. The users do online purchases all through the app company called Token Transit. Mike Urban, our administrative services director, and I have had some final questions answered recently. All looks like a good system to go with. Addresses some of our questions we've had from mostly visitors, single day passes, weekend passes, so we think for visitors, it answers a lot of questions we can't address with tokens and passes. And if we don't like it, we simply back out of it. It's a pretty good system from what we see. So, we're keeping up with a fast-paced technology industry, but this package that we proposed is a series of small route changes, and we're investing in our employees. We have a second extra board position. Last year, we did our first extra board. That means a driver shows up in the morning, not knowing what he or she will, will drive that day. And eight, nine, 10, eight, nine times out of 10, that driver will, will drive an eight-hour shift. So, this is a big help to our dispatchers, who would otherwise be calling and waking a driver up to come in, in the morning. Now, we'll have two of those. Five of our driving shifts move from halftime to three-quarter time, and we've done a lot of work in a driving shift signup, or the, the package that drivers look at, to reduce the driver's split time, the number of splits between shifts, and the amount of time between those splits. So, that's the package. I, I hope for your support and approval of this resolution.
Don't ask your questions.
So, Wayne, I just wanted to say, because anytime there are any changes, sometimes there are some folks that have a rough time with that, and I just want to say thank you for, my perception is that you've done an amazing job responding to those concerned residents, whether it's a, a bus that temporarily is on their road, or going too fast, or whatever, and you, you've always done a really good job.
Thank you.
Explaining when those buses would be there, and, you know, when they wouldn't be, and, and some of that. So, thank you very much for that. and, and some of that, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Second. Laura?
Resolution number R-49-19, a resolution adopting proposed route changes to the public transportation system effective with the start of the 2019 through 2020 service year.
All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the city of Pullman and Washington State University for the purpose of establishing prepaid transit fare passes. Again, Wayne.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This resolution approves the annual contract we have with Washington State University for transportation services. This contract provides about 45% of our operating budget. We, we rely on it heavily. WSU has always been an important component of the services that we provide, but since 1999, when the, the student transit fee was, was voted upon and implemented, that and WSU has been the reason we've been able to grow to a system that's more than just a five-bus community system. We really owe a lot to their contributions for what we are today. This con, contract enables us to put more and more frequent buses on the road, and we very much appreciate the, the support, the partnership of that department. The director of the WSU Transportation and Parking Services Department, John Shaheen, is in the audience tonight. I thank John for showing up and for his support. The changes are relatively minor. We extended the route, the latest shuttle route, 15 minutes in the evening. Those morning express loops that I mentioned earlier are also an enhancement, and there is a increase in the contract cost, and I ask your support in passing of this resolution.
Questions on this one or comments? Then do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt resolution R-50-19.
Second.
Move in second, Laura.
Resolution number R-50-19, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the city of Pullman and Washington State University for the purpose of establishing a prepaid transit fare pass system and enhanced public transportation services for Washington State University staff, students, faculty, and retirees for the 2019 through 2020 school year.
All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four, a resolution authorizing the execution of a second amendment to a five-year student transportation agreement within the city of Pullman and Pullman School District.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The, the amendment is the way we make annual changes to a five-year contract, so there are no major significant changes, although we are adding a route. I'll explain. We transport over 400 students per day when Lincoln Middle School and Pullman High School are in session. This is a fairly significant service, both to employ drivers and transport students. These are students that reside over a mile from those respective schools and within the city limits. We had, in the previous years, provided the service with six morning and six afternoon buses. Last year, we, we reduced it to five in the morning, five in the afternoon, and we believe we've settled on five in the morning, six in the afternoon. That's what we believe is needed for the current number of students. With the construction of a new elementary school in a few years, we expect that may grow, but for now, this is, this is where we think we need to be. One of the commitments we've made to the school district administration in, in these contracts the past few years is to assign the afternoon routes to our full-time drivers, and that has been a positive. It keeps the same face for those students, day in, day out. It's gone a long way towards improved student rider behavior, and I think it's also helped with, with driver retention, fewer problems, ensure the consistent face they see every day. I do want to acknowledge the presence of the two administrators I work with mostly on this contract, Superintendent Bob Maxwell and Joel Thornton in the audience tonight. Thank you. I do appreciate their support. This contract allows for over 1,000 hours, 1,400 hours of service every year, and I would say it supports five part-time driving positions, so we do appreciate it and rely on this contract. So, I ask your support in acceptance of this resolution. Thank you.
It's always impressive to see the LMS stripper in the line, and all the buses going up, and the buses coming back.
Yes, it is.
It's a well, well-organized machine.
And well-used service.
Any questions or comments? If not, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt resolution R-51-19.
Second.
Move in second, Laura.
Resolution number R-51-19, a resolution authorizing the execution of a second amendment to the five-year student transportation agreement between the city of Pullman, Washington, and Pullman School District, number 267.
All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now move into the discussion phase of the council tonight. Item number five is potential parking restrictions for Cameach Elementary, our newest elementary school. Clayton Forstman, we'll start with you, and I know we do have Joe and Bob here tonight to make comment to.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's discussion considers potential parking restrictions near the new elementary school, known as Cameach Elementary. On the screen here, you'll see kind of a general layout for the new Cameach Elementary School, and Terraview Drive is the public road right there that, that busts it. Currently, Terraview Drive ends, is a dead end. It ends right in this vicinity. It's 38 feet wide. This is also in the northwest part of Pullman. So, earlier this year, staff met with Pullman School District Director of Operations, Joe Thornton, who's been mentioned many times tonight, and we discussed the opening of this new school, the schedule for this fall. Part of that discussion involved a request to evaluate parking restrictions on Terraview in the vicinity of the school as a safety measure for students and staff, primarily during student drop-off and pickup time periods, where high congestion levels are typically encountered. In order to address congestion of the public right-of-way, the school has included a dedicated drop-off and pickup area on the school property. So, that area is this bay right here. Let's see if this pointer will work for me. This is the designated drop-off and pickup area on school property. According to the traffic impact analysis that was prepared for the new school, this area will allow for the majority of drop-offs and pickups. However, it is still possible that some on-street parking will be utilized by parents. The most heavily congested period, we anticipate to be this area here, where the driveways are located, just because of all the volume of buses and vehicles entering and exiting. In order to create a safe environment, it is important to maintain clear lines of sight and visibility, especially within this congested area. Therefore, staff recommend restricting parking on the driveway side of Terraview, so the west side, between the two main school driveways, as shown in this image. So, the highlighted area in, it's in pink here, from this point to this point, is the area recommended for parking restrictions. This amounts to approximately 470 linear feet. Pullman School District supports this recommendation, and if approved, the restricted area will be posted with signs that read, I put an image here in the upper corner, that would read "No parking, stopping, standing, any time." That would help discourage parents from sitting in their car and no parking, so much as they pick up their children, which we've seen happen in the past. At this time, we are requesting council input and direction. If council supports our recommendation, then a resolution will be brought back at a later date for council action. This is because parking restrictions greater than 100 feet in length are set by city council. I'd be glad to get input, questions.
Will, like with the other elementary schools, is there a place the parents can pull in and wait for their children?
There's a, there is a location. That would be this bay here.
Okay.
On school property.
Yes. Thank you. Yes.
That whole bay there.
Thank you. I have a little area to see.
Any idea how many cars that would hold?
It's about 270 feet long, or, excuse me, 240 feet long. The traffic impact analysis looked at designating about 30 feet, so people could pull in and out per space. So, eight vehicles, and then they're cycling through, so they looked at average drop-off times, took an average, and then looked at the total trips in and out, and so that's kind of where they determined that the majority would be served on site.
Other questions, Al?
So, I would, I was gonna kind of ask the same thing. You know, there's typically a lot of cars in a staging area, not next to the school until school gets out, so where are they gonna stage at? Because there's gonna be more than eight cars.
Oh, yeah. Just judging by Sunnyside.
Yeah.
You've seen that.
Yeah. It hasn't happened yet? Yeah, this is our best.
So, I get to use my pointer. With this lot, this, this area here and this area here, what are the...
Those are residential lots there.
Those are residential. Are they being built on yet? Do we know?
Not at those particular lots. There is a lot further east that is being built on currently.
Because it appears to me that the place they're gonna stage is right in there, so they can then pull in and pick up. So, I see a problem. And then, so they're gonna pull in and then pull back out. What about the ones that go down to the end of the Terraview? Is there a turnaround?
There is.
There is now, or there's going to be?
There is a hammerhead turnaround at the end.
What does that mean?
It's like a T.
I'm just, I know what it means. I'm just asking for everybody else, so they understand what it means. So, it's not that they can just go on a circle, they have to pull in.
Right. Another option would be to pull through school property to, to get pointed out as well.
Okay. So, hey, Joe, you guys got a problem with any of this, the way this is gonna go, with cars pulling in and waiting in the morning?
We'd appreciate you coming with the microphone, Joe, or who's in.
I'd like to get your opinion here.
Joe Thornton, Director of Operations, Pullman School District. We do not have a problem with this. We support this completely. If you don't realize this already, traffic around the schools is a problem, and it's that way everywhere. For example, Design West, who we're working with, is also doing an element, or middle school, design in Moses Lake, and their calculation there is they would need to have a half-mile of curb space available for all the parents who want to come pick up their kids. So, the critical piece for us is that in this area, so, between those driveways, we're not gonna have cars parked there, so that will allow drivers, as they're pulling out of the driveway, or buses, as they're pulling out of this driveway, to have a clear view and not have kids darting in between cars or trying to do that. So, this, this part here will give all the drivers that are trying to get out of that, those, those parking areas, whether it's for parent pickup or for buses, a clear line of sight without having cars in their way. So, that's why we think that's critical. More critical to have clear line of sight than provide additional spots for parents to pick up their kids.
And did you?
I do. Do we, do we foresee people parking on the opposite side of the street?
I foresee that happening. I foresee people getting there early, like we see at Sunnyside. They get up early, and they, they stage all the way up Shirley and around the corner, and they, and they sit in their car for 20 minutes and read a book, and I think that we're gonna see that happen here. We're gonna have people come early, turn around, and then be, be heading out on Terraview. We will have a crosswalk here with a, with a crossing guard to facilitate those students being able to safely get across the street.
Thank you.
It's almost like the airports in a way, where you have the cell phone parking lot, and they can all be in their parking lot, and the cell phone, the kid calls and says, "We're here."
Yeah.
Who knows with the way we have to design schools and parking lots in the future?
Yeah. And at which point in time, the parent hopefully says, "Yeah, I know, I know you're out of school. You know where the key is. Let me know when you get home. Have a good walk. It's good for ya."
Yeah.
That's what I'd love to see, because that's what our kids did too, you know?
Walked uphill in the snow both ways.
Yeah, that's right. Any other comments or questions?
I'm just concerned about the pushing of cars into the residential neighborhood as this builds up for waiting. That's all. And it's, it's happening. Kids don't walk to, don't walk to school or walk home anymore like we used to, like you just said. And they're all getting picked up, they don't all ride the bus, so I'm concerned about the local residential congestion on Terraview, and it's one way in and one way out for now. So...
Well, that's a whole other issue. But I pulled, I mean, I pulled up the memo to the Board of Adjustment for this, and it does say that with the traffic impact analysis, dropping off and picking up is insufficient for full buildup. It also says that everything else is sufficient for the area, so...
So, I can speak to that. We did state that in the staff report, and the condition for the conditional use permit was to lengthen the drop-off pickup area, which the school district is compliant with. So, in terms of what the Board of Adjustment approved, they approved an extension of that drop-off pickup.
So, before you is a recommendation, and you can come back later with a resolution, so where's the council sit on this one here? Would you agree with the proposal that was brought before you to have parking restrictions in that particular area?
Yes.
Everybody okay with that?
As long as that's acceptable with the school district. I mean, you guys know what you need, so...
I'm always gonna err on the side of caution for kid's safety, so, I mean, if they're saying yes, then...
All the things we did for Lincoln Middle School, if you recall, that one, that had the same kind of issue, that was supporting events too.
Exactly.
So, you'll come back at the following time with a resolution.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next item tonight is also a discussion, and this is about downtown development regulations. Pete prepared a memo to start out with, and then we'll have discussion with the council. And so, Pete Dickinson, our planning director.
Thank you, Mayor, council. In response to your request last week, I provided some background information, as the mayor said in my memo, that I'll summarize here. In the zoning code, the downtown zone is labeled as the C2 district. The boundaries of that district generally are Paloo Street, or the railroad right-of-way on the north, Kenzie Street on the south, Gladys Community Center on the west, and Brelsburg WSU Visitor Center on the east. The C2 district allows for a wide variety of commercial uses, minor production operations like bakeries, and residences on floors other than the ground level. Unlike the other zoning districts in the city, there are very few development restrictions downtown. There is no requirement, for example, to establish off-street parking spaces. The only dimensional regulation is a 60-foot building height limit, and there are no design standards that regulate the appearance of buildings and properties downtown. In the memo, I provided a table that compared the regulations relative to other major cities in eastern Washington. All of the cities allow the same basic mix of land uses. All of the cities allow residences. Most of them require that they be located on some floor other than the ground floor, just as Pullman does. The vast majority of cities do not require off-street parking for commercial uses, and some do demand parking for apartments. Pullman is on the low side for the building height limit. Only Pasco, at 45 feet, has a less restrictive limit. And about half the cities have design standards, and I included some examples of those in the packet. Currently, there are two proposed projects involving new commercial and/or residential development in the downtown area that I'm aware of. One is a proposal to add three apartments to the upper floor of an existing building on Cameach and Street between Main and Paradise. The other proposal is called Paradise Lofts. It's proposed to be located on the vacant lot east of the intersection of Paradise and Daniel Streets. That project involves 28 parking spaces on the first two floors of the building, one-story containing office space and 10 apartments on the upper levels. So far, for this project, the applicant has submitted an environmental checklist under SEPA, the State Environmental Policy Act, and the city has issued today a final determination of nonsignificance for that project. In order for the applicants to secure their rights to develop under the regulations currently in effect, that's the process of vesting, they would need to submit a complete building permit application, and neither of the owners for the two pending projects that I mentioned have submitted that application to the city at this point. With regard to design standards and the ongoing downtown master plan, I know that's been a topic of conversation recently, those standards are not as specific deliverable as part of that project. I've spoken to both Kevin Gardis and Brian Scott, the head of the consultant team about this. Both of them said that any in-depth analysis of design standards for private development is outside the current scope and budget. That doesn't mean that it couldn't be added, but that would add cost, time, and also some potential pit... potential pitfalls. For the current project, Mr. Scott did say that they will likely address architectural design standards in general fashion, and a possible outcome of the process could be a goal to pursue design standards for the downtown in the future. One final point, I think it's important to note that the geographic scope for the downtown master plan is much smaller than the C2 zone. The boundaries for the master plan are Olson Street on the north, Paradise Street on the south, Grand Avenue on the west, and Spring Street on the east. So for example, that Paradise Lofts property that I mentioned is actually outside the limits of the downtown master plan. So with that background, I can answer questions or turn it over to Laura for a discussion about the moratorium process at your discretion.
So first of all, questions of Pete before I go to Laura.
I have lots of questions.
I know you do. Okay, do you want to start with?
We can hear from Laura first if you want. I don't care.
Let's go to Laura next.
So what you had asked of me was a presentation on what a moratorium is and how would the city implement it. So a moratorium, and I apologize, those are smaller words up there than they look on my screen. It's essentially a temporary suspension of your existing regulations. You would, you are authorized to do it by the state constitution, Article 11, Section 11. That's your police powers, the same constitutional powers that give you the power to actually impose zoning and planning regulations within the city. And then RCW Chapter 35A dot 63 is the planning and zoning provision for code cities. Pullman is a code city, so that's the title that governs your planning and zoning activity. A moratorium is a temporary zoning or planning regulation. It does require a declaration that an emergency exists, such that the reason for declaring it is because the usual process of changing that zoning regulation is going to be too long, too burdensome, and you've got some imminent issue that you need to address by imposing a temporary moratorium as an emergency measure that gives you time to then go through the standard process for changing or evaluating changes to your regulations. So how do you adopt a moratorium? One, you'd have to define the area in which the current regulations will be suspended. Two, you want to define which regulations will be suspended. All of the zoning regulations, some portion thereof, that's just, that's part of the decision-making process. You'd want to create a record, a good record, in my opinion, of what it is that substantiates the emergency declaration. And we'll get into that in a little more detail. But think of the facts and criteria that you would have to be able to essentially paper the trail of why the emergency declaration and the suspension of these development regulations that impact property rights is necessary and needed. Once you've done that, you would take the legislative action to initiate the moratorium. An initial period of time for a moratorium is generally six months. You can do a 12-month initial term if you accept detailed findings of fact at the same time that you establish that 12-month term. My recommendation in the past has always been that you adopt those detailed findings of fact because that simply supports your action.
Can they do a six months and then add to it, like an extra couple of months?
Yes, that's an excellent question. We've done that in the past. If the six-month period expires, you can certainly extend it, but you have to then adopt additional findings of fact that justify and explain why you need to extend it, why the period of time wasn't sufficient. And then cities generally adopt what's called a work plan that details the steps that you're going to take as a city during the period that the moratorium is in effect. What direction are you going to give to your planning staff or your planning commission as to what they should be working on during the moratorium to address the issue that has triggered, that has triggered the moratorium? So there's two possible legislative approaches, and a moratorium is, like I said, it's a temporary zoning regulation, so it does require legislative action on your part. What I'm just gonna call Option 1 is that you would start with a resolution. You would declare an emergency and define the scope of the moratorium by a resolution. The resolution becomes effective immediately upon action by the council. So that's the reason why you would do these things separately. In that resolution or in a subsequent resolution, you'd set the public hearing date to hear testimony regarding, one, the emergency, and, two, the scope of the moratorium that you've declared. Like I said, you can set that public hearing date in the resolution. You can do it by motion at a subsequent meeting once staff have figured out timing and schedules. But you do need to have that public hearing, not later than 60 days after you adopt that emergency resolution. So then you'd hold that public hearing, take the public testimony. Following that public hearing, assuming you wanted to continue with actually imposing a final, for lack of a better word, moratorium, you would adopt an ordinance, because ultimately it does require adopting an ordinance, again, because it is inland use regulation. And you would impose the final terms of that moratorium. The ordinance itself is not effective, and none of your ordinances are effective until five days after publication in the newspaper. And then you would also want to adopt that work plan that addresses what the situation is and how you're going to come to a final recommendation for action to address the issue that's triggering your moratorium finding. You're going to adopt those findings of fact. You can do it either at the time you do the resolution, at the very beginning, if you're prepared to do that, if you've been able to direct staff to give them enough facts to put into an exhibit as findings of fact. So you can do it with the resolution at the beginning, or you can use that period of time between the adopting the resolution and adopting the ordinance to come up with the findings of fact. And in reality, part of the purpose for the public hearing is so that you can hear what the public's input is as to findings of fact that you may want to make. What I am calling Option 2 is essentially the same process, but it's just structured differently. In that case, you wouldn't do the emergency resolution that would be effective immediately. You would simply direct staff to compile the information that is necessary for the moratorium and create the scope and the area for you and the terms of the moratorium. You'd then go ahead and schedule and hold a public hearing. And then subsequent to that public hearing, if you decide that a moratorium is needed, you'd then direct staff to adopt the, or prepare the ordinance and the detailed findings of fact to support the moratorium. And again, it still has to be declared an emergency. Either way that you do this, it has to be declared an emergency. And you'd then consider that ordinance and the findings of fact and adopt it and formalize setting the moratorium. And again, you've got an effective date, five days after publication for an ordinance. Okay? So really, the difference between those is that the resolution is, the moratorium is in place on the day that you take action on the resolution. Otherwise, the process is generally the same. It's just whether you're starting with the resolution and then getting to the ordinance down the road. Pullman's done it both ways in the past. And then again, once that ordinance is adopted, you do need to adopt that work plan that establishes what you're going, what the city's going to do during the period of the moratorium. So I just wanted to outline for you some of the pros and cons and what benefits and risks of moratoriums. These aren't, this is in my experience, this is in the legal resources that are available, talking about land use law. That's where I pulled these bullet points from. So on the benefit side, what a moratorium does for you is it maintains the status quo of either an area, an entire city, depending on how far you go with it, while the city considers potential new land use regulations. It can also allow time for a city to analyze the impact on the local jurisdiction of new state laws or regulations. We've done that multiple times here in Pullman with the changes in the, with the recreational marijuana and the medical marijuana laws. Gives you time to address what that impact is and, again, come up with your local response to it. And it also authorizes staff, the impact really for the property owners, is it authorizes staff to suspend acceptance of new building permit applications, development agreement applications, subdivision, short subdivision applications during the period of time that the moratorium is in effect. The staff does continue, the city does continue to process current existing permit applications that are, that are complete. Those property owners that have submitted those types of applications prior to your moratorium that are what's called fully vested, then they have the right to be able to have their application, their land use application, processed by the city according to the land use regulations that were in place at the point in time at which their application was declared complete by the city. So if you have a complete application at the time a moratorium is adopted, then you fall under the existing regulations that have been temporarily suspended for anybody that comes after that point in time. On the, what I see is the risk side, and the most common risks that cities run into is you've got the fact that this does restrict new development activity while you have the moratorium in place. Because that, it impacts land use rights, property rights, there is a significant risk of litigation, because property owners don't like it when the city changes the rules, and they don't like it when they suspend their ability to submit building permit applications or development applications to the cities. So it's not uncommon for a property owner to file a claim against a city for what they perceive as damages to themselves, their property, their property rights, or a project. Some of the, some of the legal actions that they would base a claim on that have, that commonly happen is a claim that it's an unconstitutional taking of their property rights. In addressing that claim, the best way for the city to avoid a takings claim is to make sure that the moratorium is not overbroad, right? It is being adopted specifically to address the issue that has triggered the emergency for the city, and it's a narrowly defined scope. It's gone up to the US Supreme Court as to whether a moratorium is a taking, and what the court held was that, no, so long as it is narrowly crafted in order to address the public health, welfare, and safety issue that the city council has determined, then you'll survive a challenge that it's an unconstitutional taking. But you do still risk the litigation to prove that it's not an unconstitutional taking. But again, the best way to address that is that papering your trail of why you got there and how you got there. Again, another one that comes from an inadequate process is a claim that you failed to adopt adequate findings in support of the emergency and the scope of the moratorium that you've created. And then also a claim, again, we talked about vested rights, that's actually probably the more common claim, is that you're interfering with someone's vested rights. Vested rights are very well established now in the state of Washington for a number of years, actually in the past two decades. It's been in flux, but about three years ago, a case was decided that says vested rights are purely statutory in the state of Washington. So there's only three instances in which you can claim you have a vested right. A building permit application, a development agreement that's been executed, and then a subdivision or a short subdivision application. So those are the three statutory vested rights that a developer has or property owner And then just some examples. I gave you up on the dais, and then we've got some for handouts. An example of one of Pullman's prior moratoria, but just the three that are, have been the most recent ones that I'm familiar with in the last decade. About 2011, we did a moratorium that was adopted pending the outcome of state rulemaking and court challenges regarding medical marijuana collective gardens. 2013, another moratorium related to marijuana businesses, and that was adopted to temporarily suspend any applications for such a business in the city while the state was creating regulations to implement Initiative 502. And then the 2015 one, the most recent one, and I think that's the copy I gave you. Yes. That was a moratorium on any marijuana retail business, production facility, or processing facility. That came again while state regulations, the WACs, were in flux, because they were combining legislatively amending Initiative 502 and bringing medical marijuana operations within the fold of the regulatory scheme for recreational marijuana. So while those things were in flux, and actually the number of businesses that Pullman was going to be able, that were going to be permitted in the city of Pullman was in flux, we suspended any of those applications during that time. During each of those situations, we've had really detailed work plans, and then some of them were also extended. The 2013 one, the state took, if you'll remember, the state took a very long time in going through and developing those WACs. So we did have to extend that moratorium, I think, a couple times. Yeah, yeah, I think a couple times. So that's the presentation on what it is, how you would implement it, and happy to take any questions.
Okay. Uh...
I need to just get right down to basics here. What exactly is the definition of an emergency in this scenario that we're looking at?
In the scenario that Councilmember Sorenson has suggested that we impose one, I guess I still need, I still need to hear what those criteria are. I, you know, we, I know that the business, the master planning process is going on for downtown. So obviously, that would be part of the criteria. There are questions about what would be the scope of where that emergency exists, because the fact that the, usually you do these by, you're lifting zoning regulations. So usually you would do it by the entire zone, and you have a downtown central business district zone that is, doesn't have the same boundaries as your study. So we'd have to, there would be unique, if you wanted to include the entire zone within a moratorium, we'd want, you'd want to have additional findings to say why this area that's not subject to the study also needs to have the land use regulations frozen. So I can't tell you what it is, I just don't feel like I have enough information.
I mean, to me, an emergency is a flood on Grant, or, you know, taking out the traffic monitor on the...
I've had to declare an emergency, and the council comes back later.
Exactly. You know, a flood, a hurricane, a tornado. How does this fit into the scope of what I'm looking at as an emergency?
Well, that's why I gave you the three examples to kind of help you understand of what types of situations have triggered moratoria in the past, not just in Pullman, but in multiple other jurisdictions. So changes in regulations, potential changes in your land use regulations. So, I mean, doing a downtown study certainly could be a criteria for determining that the emergency exists, and you need to suspend any new development activity within that area while you wait for the consultant to give you the report and then decide what you're going to do. Think about the process, the timing, the expectation when you adopt a moratorium is that you're, unless you have that detailed work plan in place, you're adopting it at the same time as the moratorium, and you're going with a 12-month term, generally it's the six-month term, and what will change in that six months that will affect what it is you're concerned about?
Have we heard what the deadline is? I know some of you were on the selection committee, when the report will be ready on the master plan.
It's my understanding, January or February, in that timeframe. I know it's very soon after the first of the year.
Okay.
So we're, so that is well within six months. And the...
Since you have the floor, just take it.
I'm sorry. I carefully read the example that Laura provided for us here, and although the word emergency sounds like what you and I would maybe consider an emergency, we did, we did this, did throw this emergency because the state had not yet prepared its final documentation on how we were to proceed. So it wasn't like, yeah, the sky was falling, we were just waiting for them to sort out their paperwork. Am I interpreting that right?
Correct. Absolutely.
Now...
I wanna, I wanna go back to a couple things. And first off, I want Pete to explain to the... to the council and to the public what the process is before you apply with a building permit, particularly in the C2 downtown area. So can you explain the process, the steps, and when do they become vested?
Sure. So for any project that involves 12,000 square feet of commercial space or 20 apartments or more, or a significant amount of grading, they do need to go through that State Environmental Policy Act process that I mentioned and prepare an environmental checklist, submit that to the city, and then we process that and either issue a determination of significance or non-significance depending on the outcome.
And how long is that out there for?
Um, that whole process probably takes about 40, 45 days from start to finish.
Let me rephrase my question. From when we post the public notice, how long do people have to respond?
Uh, so posting of the public notice, that's for the preliminary determination and non-significance. And there's a 14-day comment period associated with that. So members of the public have 14 days to comment on the preliminary determination the city has come to.
And then what happens when that time period ends?
Uh, the city considers the comments that it receives and if the, in most cases, the city determines that the original determination should proceed, then it issues a final determination of non-significance and that is associated with a 10-day appeal period. So in the case of Paradise Lost, for instance, the final determination of non-significance was issued today and that begins a 10-day appeal period.
Okay. And at the end of the 10-day appeal period, then what happens?
Then the project has been declared officially non-significant and then it's up to the applicant to take whatever next steps are necessary. And that depends on the type of development. If the use is permitted outright in the zoning district, then the next step would be site plan review where they submit basically drawings that show the building footprint, landscaping, parking, utilities, access, those types of things, so.
Is that the building permit application?
It's not yet, no. That's site plan review application that's required by the zoning code. And so that's reviewed by the site plan review committee, which is composed of members of the Public Works Department, planning, fire, police. And so that committee reviews the project and usually it's an iterative project where the first application is not complete, but we work with the applicant to make it complete and then we, as a site plan review committee, we approve that plan in most cases, once they've made it complete and it meets code. And then.
And that time period takes about how long?
Well, I think we average probably about eight weeks, two, three months sometimes. There are some projects that take longer than that. It really depends on the motivation of the applicant. If we've got a highly motivated developer, then it can happen within a, a two-month period approximately.
Now, looking at your planning newsletter, I, you know, you go down the list in the back and I am an avid reader of your planning.
Well, thank you, Mary.
But it'll always say return to, you know, the developer for comments or, or modifications or revisions, things like that.
Yep.
And that seems to hit a number of them, like you said, and that is the site plan area, right?
And that's the site plan.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So. Anywhere from a couple of weeks to eight weeks or something like that?
Yeah, or more.
Okay. When the, when the site plan then is okayed, then what?
Um, then it's followed up by a building permit application.
Is initiated by the developer or the contractor, whoever it is?
Yes, property owner, developer, contractor. And they submit that with building plans, it's reviewed by our protective inspections division, planning, fire. And so at that point, once those plans conform to code, then the building permit is issued and they start construction on the project.
Okay. So a, a building permit application cannot be filed until when? When can you file that?
Um, the building permit application can be filed basically at any point in the process.
At any point in the.
At any point in the process that we talked about, yes. They would not have to wait for the site plan review application to, to be completed. They are taking a risk when they supply a building permit application during the site plan process because the site plan oftentimes will change the building configuration somewhat. But they're free to apply for a building permit application during the site plan review process.
And as soon as that application is submitted, they are vested?
As soon as we receive a complete building permit application, they're vested, yes.
Okay, so I need.
Let's define complete.
I need, yeah, I'm, I'm asking questions here. When is it complete?
Um, I guess if, if we were pressed for an answer on that, then I think that we would need to consult with legal staff. But generally, it's complete when they have a permit application and building plans that are deemed complete by our protective inspections division.
So even though there could be things that then get adjusted later, by them submitting the application, they are vested?
If it's complete.
And the definition of complete is?
It's, it's laid out in the International Building Code in terms of what, it's going to depend on the project, right? So it, do they have the certain, the plans that are required for that, parking requirements, do they have all the information that they need to provide in order for the city to decide whether to issue the building permit? And have they paid the fee in full for the parking, or for the building permit?
Okay. So.
They actually don't pay the fee until we issue the permit. That's when fee is remitted.
Okay. So my next question is, in regards to a temporary moratorium being implemented, whether we, whatever we decide to do, if someone's not vested, and I've read your stuff here, are we able to possibly exclude a project that is already in the quote, in my definition, works but not vested, from the moratorium?
You would then be treating any property owner in a special way and that would be a violation of every other property owner's property rights and due process rights? You can't, you can't provide special treatment to a single property owner.
Okay, so the only way that they're ever vested is when they submit a building application and it is deemed complete?
Yes.
Or a subdivision or short subdivision. I mean, I don't want you to focus on one specific project. I want you, I want to make sure that it's clear that if there were a subdivision application, a short subdivision application within the area that you're intending to do it, that it was filed and it was complete, they also would vest in the regulations that are being frozen.
Okay, but the moratorium that I'm talking about is for a specific area, which is not possible for it to have a subdivision or building subdivision.
There are three things.
I guess, I don't know the boundaries of, of the area.
It's within the realm of possibility that someone might short plot a portion of the downtown, but that seems unlikely. I mean, that doesn't happen very often.
Okay, I have, I have many more things to talk about, but if anybody else wants to say something at this point, I'll, you all yield.
I'd like to go back to the definition of a downtown. First time when you talked about the lot, you said it was outside the scope of the immediate area of the, where the consultant was going to be working.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's outside the limits of the, of the master plan area that was defined.
Okay. Brandon?
We're on option two, if we were to go with this, it says schedule and hold a public hearing. How far out does that public hearing notice have to be? I mean, how many days do we have to give?
You have to give at least 10 days notice of, of a public hearing that impacts a land use regulation. So minimum of 10 days notice from when you set it, and, well, 10 days public notice, right? So when it gets published in the newspaper.
So it's not like 60 days?
Right. No, the 60 days is, is if you haven't held the public hearing prior to adopting the ordinance, then you have to hold a public hearing within 60 days after.
Understood.
Other questions?
Yeah, just, I think more of a comment, just so we're all, I think we're, we're talking about an area. So the downtown master plan that we've contracted for consulting services on is a smaller area than the C2 district downtown.
Correct.
And some of that is because we were looking at kind of the public right-of-way spaces within that, but the C2 district extends beyond a lot of the, the specific public right-of-ways that we were looking at. And so I think if we were looking at wanting to kind of follow the master plan with actual private development design standards, it would make sense to me to include the entire C2 district downtown in a design standard review and, and possible revision. So I think, I just want to put that out there in, in terms of kind of what my thoughts are on, on a potential geographic area would be to match the C2 district if we're looking at that specific moratorium for the review and revision of design standards for commercial development.
The entire C2 district, there's also some discussion of a building that's at Whitman and Grant. Is that still at the C2 district?
Whitman and Grant, yes.
Clint Cole's working on a program right now to develop something there. Is that outside of it?
Yeah, that's outside of the C2 zone.
Okay. Excellent. Other questions?
I'll go again. Okay, so my original thought on this was, thank you for your input on that with the entire C2, but I was actually trying to focus more on the central business district boundaries, which are the, lack of a better term, the core downtown area and not some of the outer edges. Um, you know, I have something I'm just gonna say here and I wrote it down because I forget too much. Uh, but you know, I have an important job here and at times being on city council is tough. That job is to be sure that all growth and all projects enhance the city of Pullman, okay? And that's why people voted for me and that's why I plan to continue to do my job well. I just want to throw a couple of things out here. The city council approved a contract with a consultant for $122,800 to help us establish a master plan for the central business district in Pullman. That's an awful lot of money, right? And a year ago, we had another consultant who we paid $50,000 to help develop an economic development plan for downtown, who we ended up having to let go out of their contract, saving us an additional $85,000 because we weren't getting the things that they said they were gonna get us. Also on top of that, back in 2014, we paid for a downtown traffic circulation study that cost the citizens of Pullman $44,000. Uh, you know, if you add this up, we've spent over $216,000 in the most recent past on some studies and things like that. And if we'd included the full gamut with retail strategies, it would have been over $300,000 of our taxpayers' money. I think it's irresponsible not to have a master plan completed before we allow more building and more poorly planned economic development in the downtown core. The people of this town have said numerous ways and numerous times over the last few years, with the 2040 stuff coming to here and other meetings, that they want downtown Pullman to be a vital, vibrant place for people to come down and go to. We have to give them a reason to do that. It needs to look good and it needs to be like that. I think the moratorium gives us time to have a comprehensive design for our downtown, which includes beautiful sidewalks, ample parking, landscape areas, making it attractive for a mix of good retail, elevating our downtown so it's a place for both locals and tourists that want to visit. And I believe we have the responsibility to our citizens to let the master plan for the central business district be completed before any new projects get started. As I said before on Tuesday, now is the time and if we don't do it, it could be too late. Okay? That's my thoughts on that. Now, I do have some additional questions of Pete. There've been a few emails and things going around and the last one this afternoon was in regards to the contract with BDS in regards to the central business district master plan. And I, I want to discuss this a little bit because I personally am a little bit confused at some of my comments and questions in regards to the contract that we signed with them for them to work up this master plan. Originally, the, oh, okay, RFQ, right? Request for qualifications for this project included quite a bit of information about design standards and it mentions it multiple times. And when you say design standards, that can mean a lot of things. It doesn't mean, have to mean a structure of a building, it could mean sidewalks, it could mean green spaces, it's all designing, right? So we put that out there and then the applicants that returned their qualifications all addressed those things and we, I was on the committee, selection committee, and we selected three companies to interview for the project, deciding on BDS, right? And their presentation to us mentioned design standards in multiple different ways. And so in my eyes, that was always going to be part of the master plan, was to give us some ideas on the look and feel of downtown. I think that's what we were all hoping would come with this. I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I think that was the general consensus. We then approved the contract with them on June 4th. And in looking at the contract, which I got some email today, you know, it still says in there, "Design standards and design aspects of Main Street approach." Okay? It also says in their, in their plan scope, you know, number 3.3, deliverable number four, it says, "Key elements will include da-da-da-da-da-da, design standards and street skate enhancements." Now, I have from you, Pete, information here saying that you've spoken with Kevin and you've spoken with Brian Scott, who is president or the head of BDS, I don't know what his title is.
He is BDS, Brian Scott.
He is BDS, right, okay. That, uh, it was, it is clear from those conversations that any detailed work on architectural design standards is outside the scope of the work. So I have a problem with what I thought we were approving on January, or June 4th, where it still says the things that we talk about, design standards, and you're telling me that they're not going to do that. But I do believe that this contract, that's exactly what it is, is to help us with design of all of the central business district, whether it's sidewalks, parking, traffic flow, you know, trees, green space, all of that. So I'm a little bit confused and a little bit taken back that that's not the direction we're moving in. So can you address that, please?
Yeah, I appreciate your comments. I think the, the basic way that I'd explain it is that the project sets in motion various improvements for the downtown in terms of a plan. It's a master plan that would, what Mr. Scott told me today was that he, at this point, plans to provide a general description. plans to provide a general description of potential design standards for the downtown, perhaps some illustrations, and then a goal to establish, if the city wishes, design standards for private development in the downtown area. And that's what the scope and budget includes as far as he's concerned. And that was mirrored by Kevin's comments as well. So, in other words, if the city was expecting that we would be handed a 15-page document, and this came directly from Mr. Scott today, that would have design standards for private development catered to Pullman's circumstances, that would be ready for a draft that would go to the planning commission at a public hearing, that cannot happen under the current contract scope and budget. It wouldn't, you would need to add expense and time to the budget, or to the project in order to make that work.
Okay. I will just say that I understand that, and that is not what I was expecting to get from them. But what I am expecting to get is ideas from them that we can use as a council and planning commission.
And I think that's forthcoming, I think that will be forthcoming.
To possibly get, whether we change anything or we don't change anything, but put everything in process so that we can create the downtown that I think everyone wants to have.
Yeah.
And that's what I am hoping that we're going to get. I know we're not going to get a ready document to take to the planning commission to say, "This is what we want, this color, this construction, that, I get it," okay? But this project, in my eyes, is the thing that we have to do in order for us to get downtown where it needs to be. And, you know, I just, I just, I just really, really think that we have to consider not letting new construction occur, whether it's in the C2 zone or the central business district, until we have information back from BDS that helps us decide exactly what we want and what we don't want. And, you know, I, some people here are aware of, you know, a situation years ago when we were working with the county on cluster housing, just outside the city limits. And we were working with the county to put a buffer, I don't know what the word would be, but I would say a buffer.
Urban growth area.
Between the current city limits and where cluster housing was, because we knew we needed to expand. And the minute that we did that, maybe I'm exaggerating, shortly after we did that, there were a number of cluster housing developments that.
Dropped on us.
Popped in.
That's right.
Which then create a problem for us as a city. Now, I'm not saying that that's going to happen to the central business district downtown, but already you've mentioned a second project that was not in your thing here that I know nothing about. You know, we know that other properties have recently sold in the downtown central business district with who knows what plans they want to do. So there is activity going on. And the question here is, is do we really want to make sure that everything fits into what the residents and the people of Pullman want downtown Pullman to look like and to feel like? And that's where I'm coming from on this. And everything I've said is about a temporary thing, just for us to get our ducks in a row. Now, the process of applying for an application and everything else, I appreciate you giving me that, and I didn't mean to, I wanted times, dates, length of time.
Sure.
It takes a little while for you to get going. There's one project right now that's in the works. Right? But now, you said there's a second one, so I don't.
There's a second one? It's, yeah.
Where are they at now? Have they submitted their PNS?
They applied for a conditional use permit, as was required for increased housing density at the site, that was approved, and that's where it is right now.
It's an established building here.
It's an existing building.
It's not building something new, it's an established building.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, but where I'm going with this is, we can't stop anybody, and they can do anything they want as long as it fits our current guidelines.
Sure.
Unless they have to get a conditional use permit, which then has to be approved.
By the board.
By the board.
At their discretion.
And then eventually approved by this council, correct?
Nope. Nope. The board's decision is fine.
It is the board's decision.
Yeah.
So the board also doesn't know what we want to happen in this town, the residents or the council members or anything else. They've got no direction from us at this point. So.
Yes.
You know, I mean, and then you think about it, so you also have mentioned that the last zoning or ordinance changes that we did in the, I don't know.
C2 district?
The C2 district in downtown Pullman was in 2003. So more or less 15 years ago. And when we did that, as you state, that was really done to help relax some of the codes and ordinances to attract new development or whatever, right?
Well.
What were your words?
That was basically my words, but the changes that we made in 2003 were not that substantial.
Okay.
You could probably go back to our zoning code in 1960 and find that it's very similar to what we have today in terms of what we allow downtown, and that's based on the historical use of properties downtown.
Okay, so.
It just, I mean.
But we did, and that's what you said, that we relaxed it a little bit in some way, I don't know what way. Right? Okay. So what new construction projects have happened in the C2 district in downtown Pullman in the last 15 years?
New construction?
Yeah.
I probably have to get back to you on that with a full list.
I mean, I'm just thinking, I mean, and we know the Evolve building.
Exactly.
You have the lumberyard that's been revised.
Lumberyard, existing building.
That wasn't new construction.
The foundation office.
That was after this?
That was probably.
Oh, before this, I mean.
Before 15 years.
Yeah, that was, that was after the fire.
So, I guess where I'm going with this is that we tried to entice, in my opinion, and I'm sure that the council members at the time probably thought the same thing about new development in downtown Pullman by trying to relax some of the things, and it really hasn't brought a whole lot in here. Now, in the last couple of years, things have perked up, and you've mentioned that recently also. And so, the point here is, that I'm trying to make is, is that I believe that the residents of Pullman, this city council, and the visitors that come to this town want our downtown to be welcoming, fun-to-go-to, great aesthetics, good character, places to shop, places to eat, and all that type of thing. Everybody talks about, "We need to get everybody to come downtown, we need to get everybody to come downtown." Well, for what? We need to make it so that those businesses, those retail stores, and everything else is there for people to come to, and that it is a place that you like to just go hang out at. So I, again, my thought process behind a temporary moratorium is for us to wait until we have further information from our consultant that we just hired for $122,800 to give us some of these answers.
Mayor.
Okay, Laura asked for first, Ben, what do you have?
Thank you, council member, that actually was pretty informative in terms of being able to understand what you're thinking about in terms of scope. So I just, I just want to make sure that in terms of, as you said, design standards can be interpreted multiple ways, because there's lots of different design standards. So my understanding from Kevin Gardis was the same that Pete had, I talked to him after the last council meeting, that the design standards were geared toward streets and sidewalks. And that's also reflected by the fact that 100% of the funding for the contract is coming from the arterial streets fund, the street fund, and the water budget. So things that, those are, as you know, enterprise funds, and those funds can only be used for activities that are related to those enterprises, those utilities, so streets and water. So there's, there are design standards, there's road standards that govern roads and streets, but a couple times I heard you talk about color, types of businesses, aesthetics. So those are architectural design standards that the consultant said were not within the scope and certainly wouldn't be something that could be paid for out of those utility funds. And I guess, so then, when you're talking about the scope of the moratorium that you're proposing, are you looking at new construction that would, that would require cuts in the streets or the roads and the construction of sidewalks, things like that? Or are you talking about, like, a lumberyard project where it's a remodel of an existing building?
I think I am talking about new construction that would have something to do with cutting streets, sidewalks, and that type of thing.
Okay. So I think that, that type of activity, that information will be provided by the consultant, or at least an overview of what are some potential ones.
Now, you know, in, so when you read what they're going to deliver, there are things that are not associated with streets or parking. They talk about liquid arts districts, children's play areas, you know, all kinds of other things here, public art, open space, River Rock, which are not part of streets where this money's coming from.
And.
Had I known that we were restricted on anything, or that that would stop things to be coming from for this, I would have put money in it from the general fund or wherever we would have had to take it from to make sure that it included all of this. Because what you're telling me now is, is that actually half of the things on this list, we can't pay for, for them to look at.
I'm not sure if you're looking at the RFQ or if you're looking at.
I'm looking at the contract.
The contract, the scope of work on the contract.
3.3.
Okay. So that's, and as we've said, it's certainly possible to amend the contract, to do that, and find the funding to pay for those types of things, and find out how much time that would add to the contract and the project. So those are all possibilities to change, but the state of the matter is now is, is that those design standards are geared towards streets and sidewalks, infrastructure, not building design, color, architecture.
What he was going to talk about themes too, of what he was going to give some recommendations, that would pour the downtown area other than just looking at streets and sidewalks.
Correct, in terms of the appearance of private property.
Right.
Right. I mean, he's mentioned that he will provide that in terms of some ideas, as you mentioned.
Right, which is what he did in Paulville, and he did in Lewiston, same thing.
And when you think about architectural design standards, it's always really easy for me to say, "Design standards that require your building to look like it's located in a Swiss Alps village." And you know where that is, and you know what those design standards are, but they are architectural, they talk about gingerbread cutouts and things like that, color schemes. That's different than having play areas and walkable sidewalks and benches to sit on, or having bike and bike locker facilities, things like that.
Okay, Brian, you have the foreknowledge.
Yeah, just wanted to keep giving Al a chance to get a drink of water here, there's a lot of talking. So I think we're spending $122,800 on this, we said is our number one priority to focus on downtown. Now, I heard a really good analogy that somebody gave one of our residents this week that said if we were remodeling our kitchen and we hired a designer to come in and do that, we wouldn't want a contractor or our contractors to come in while we're still waiting for the design and start building things in our kitchen. We would want that design to come to us first, and then, then things after that could, they could be in accordance with what that design plan is. I think for whatever reason, we've had a lot of people interested in downtown, we've had business owners interested in downtown, for one reason or the other, something either wasn't working, or we knew it could work better. And so I think it would behoove us to say, "This is actually something that's going to help businesses downtown. It's going to help us with the revitalization, it's going to help us increase foot traffic." We're talking about recruiting new businesses, we're talking about setting the climate downtown that we're wanting, that will attract those new businesses, that will attract foot traffic. People buy things, cars don't buy things. What do we do to get people downtown, to increase our placemaking? These are all things that our master plan, I assume, is going to address. I mean, we're talking about just putting the brakes on things to make sure that this is going to go forward. So maybe, Laura, maybe you could, Al and I, we, you know, so if this is a narrow scope, maybe this will help you understand where I'm coming from. Al and I agree on a lot of stuff, we probably disagree on art, right? I like things that are a little more eclectic, I like bike racks and benches that are maybe a little more eclectic, and, you know, Al's a little different in that regard. I would like to see what the BDS says about things like that, because, you know, then we can move forward, and I'm sure Al's got the same concern that I do, is we've got so many wheels in motion with so many different groups right now. Alina and I sat in on a committee today for the Downtown Pullman Association, and they were talking about the Way Finding Subcommittee, you know, coming up with new signs for Pullman. And I think that's, that could be a fear, is all of a sudden we're getting new signs from a very well-meaning group popping up downtown that may or may not be what the BDS folks come up with as best practice, or what would work here in Pullman. So how do we deal with art? How do we deal with new signage and wayfinding? I mean, all of those kind of things, I think, are really, really important for us to just take a step back and see what the kitchen remodel designer says about this, before we go through, you know, just full-threaded support from all these different entities that are, I mean, well-meaning, but let's just, let's take a step back, and I think that is an emergency, because we're spending taxpayer dollars on this, and it's something that many people have said that they wanted. That's kind of where I'm at, just so you know.
Dan, you have the foreknowledge.
Yeah, thanks. So I agree with the sentiment that we're spending a bunch of money on a design, and we don't want to have projects come up in the middle of that design process that are counter to what the ultimate product is, because those, if there's new construction during that time period, those new buildings are going to be there for a long time before they get changed to suit or fit what the rest of the design plan is. But your analogy to the kitchen remodel is not, I don't think is really pertinent here, because we don't control all of the sticks in the bundle, we don't control all the rights to make changes to private property. So we have to also balance that with the respect of private property rights and their own determination of what they do with their property, balance against what our role as a city is in kind of providing a more clear plan. So one of the responsibilities that we have in making design standards and comprehensive plans and zoning codes is making it clear to property owners what the rules are and making it more consistent so that they understand how to be in compliance with those rules. And so when we're talking about a moratorium, a potential moratorium, in the scope of the current scope of the master plan, if we're not, if that master plan is not really with the architectural design plan or design standards, then I think any moratorium would need to be specifically tied to the thing that is in question right now. And so I think if we wanted to include architectural design standards, we would need to have that be part of a work plan that would say, "We are going to do a central business district master plan that's going to include these elements, that's going to inform a review of our design standards for architectural elements." Because without that piece, I don't see that we have enough connection to the, to restrict private property rights in this case.
So can I give you a connection that might make sense in his real life? So the Evolve on Main, yeah, I mean, I think it's a great-looking building. We've had, we've had a number of groups, Pullman Civic Trust is just one of them, who have said, "Wouldn't it be great if we had the Pine Street Mall extend through Pine Street?" We didn't really miss it when it was closed down. Only during that design, one of the things that they had was an ingress and an egress to a parking garage, not only on Paradise but on Pine. And so, you know, well, shucks, we're six months too late. Had we known that this was an option, potentially closing down Pine Street, surely the designer might have come up with some other options, right, that might have suited what that expectation was, you know, in terms of our downtown. So we want to, we want to have this natural progression from Pine Street to the rest of Pine. So we wanna, we wanna have this natural progression from Pine Street to the rest of Pine Street, they, they very willingly, I'm sure, would have said, "Hey, we can do this, this way," right? But, but now it's too late, right? So we're looking at trying to retrofit as a possibility.
And what you're doing there is tying that specifically to the cutting of the road, which I think is what we were talking about earlier.
Sure.
But if we're talking about new construction that doesn't involve those elements of disrupting the road like that, which they probably would, I just wanna make sure that we're all very clear on tying the, the reasoning for why we're instituting a moratorium to the specific things that are in question or in the works.
And the reason they had that garage there is for the business people.
Yeah.
So they could actually have access, because our parking regulations required it. Eileen, you're next.
Boy, so many things. In the BDS, just right the second, the BDS document refers to, in the contract, excuse me, refers to placemaking analysis and considerations will include the Pine Street Plaza and the High Street Mall. So those are, those are larger, that's not just curb cuts, that, that's a lot more than curb cuts. And, and so when you're starting to talk about, especially a potential Pine Street or potential High Street, because there are buildings that are in development on, on High Street, and they're just, they're organizing themselves, we want that to be cohesive with whatever BDS comes up with that we like about the, about the Pine, or High Street Mall. And, and you talk about the sticks in the bundle, well, we do control some of the sticks, that's part of our job as a city, we control some of the sticks in the bundle. We just don't just say, "Go do whatever you want." And that's whether you're building a private home, a single-family home, or whether you're driving, you know, doing something in a downtown location, whether it's new construction or remodel. So we're within our, we're within our police power to, to look at that and scope that out. But I had a technical question for Laura. Can we, if we choose to do something, would it have to be the whole C2? Would it have to be the entire C2? My impression is we can kind of carve this thing, within reason, we can kind of carve this thing up as we need it, to conform to our, our concerns about having the BDS coherent with where we're headed.
Yes, the recommendation, if you do that, would be that it, whatever area you define, you have the justification for why you chose that area.
Okay.
Right? So if it, if you're looking at design standards, architectural design standards that would apply in the entire C2 zone, then it would make sense to do the entire C2 zone. If you're looking at design standards that would only be imposed within a smaller subarea of the downtown C2 zone, then that would be the area you would include. The, the, what you need to do is provide the documentation, the basis, the facts, for why you needed to impose a moratorium on that specific area.
And I think that, I think there's, you know, not necessarily, I think there's ample reasons to discuss that in terms of being consistent with, with BDS and our objectives for the downtown, central business downtown. We are spending a lot of money. We spent a lot of money in the past, as Al points out, and we've got very little to show for it. I've been lukewarm on design standards of various kinds, I think people are aware of that, but this is something different. This is not residential housing on College Hill, it was, the main consideration was density, was residential density. This is about having an attractive business, a place that people can come to and invest, knowing that there are some sideboards on this, knowing that they're not going to have something completely outre built next to them as they wanna come into this, because that's, that's a possibility with no design standards. This is, this is something that the idea, this is, the time has come for downtown business design standards. They need to be carefully wrought, they need to be fairly administered. I mean, this is not an easy thing by any means, and I feel that, you know, I trust BDS, I have talked to them, I've talked to Brian, the meeting, the kickoff meeting was just absolutely splendid, I sit through a lot of meetings that aren't that splendid. And I think we've got a real gem of, that we're getting for our $122,000, and we need to look at all the elements of how we can maximize their input for what we want downtown and for our future.
One clarification, Al, on this, when you mentioned that before on design standards, you're talking about this design standard would apply to new businesses as opposed to the existing ones that are there right now.
Well, that depends.
Because that one there was existing buildings.
That, that depends on, on what's adopted. I mean, it, it's within your powers to impose it on existing buildings, just like, once you hit a certain square footage or a certain amount of, of work on, in a building permit, you, you have to upgrade the entire house to, to current standards, things like that. So it would, you could, you would establish, that would be part of that process of, of going back to the planning commission, is establishing what are the criteria that would trigger an existing building to have to come within those design standards. But again, we're going, I, I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing street and road standards, which would include the pedestrian malls that are on streets, that's all part of transportation. And then I'm also hearing talk about architectural, the, the structure of the building, what the building looks like. And those are two very different types of standards.
Nathan's next.
No, go ahead, Nathan.
So, so then would a potential emergency, however we define that, would one possibility be a lot of the work that is going on right now with Towngown, Downtown Pullman Association, you know, in, so in addition to the downtown master plan, I mean, could that be a justification for looking at some of this, having planning commission look at some of this, before we get down the road of, of things being built, you know, to the no, no design standards right now?
Are you talking about architectural design standards?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I, maybe, I would have to look through what, what is being done. I mean, what I would need is for people to pull, to pull out what elements of the Towngown process relate to architectural design standards for downtown.
Okay. Which does exist, so.
Okay. Yeah, so that would be the type of criteria.
There's actually a specific design committee that is in align with the Main Street program that we're an affiliate of now, so, yeah, that does exist. Thanks, Nathan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So FYI, my work in community design, architectural standards is much more in-depth than, you know, what you would expect in a master plan. So I did prepare something as well, because I tend to forget. After discussing this with many community members, business owners, and reviewing all of my own education, I've come to a few conclusions, but it's a little long-winded. I understand Councilmember Sorensen's point about having a vision and waiting for the downtown consultant, absolutely. Traditionally, we have been flexible with development and do our best to encourage businesses and improvement in our city, which in my opinion, has worked for the most part. Much of the downtown has become mixed-use, boasting housing, retail, restaurants, professional establishments, coffee shops, and more. In fact, I lived above Daily Grind with several friends, and we enjoyed the ability to get coffee, take a bus, go up to campus, get drinks at night, and have dinner downtown. I know the majority of our developers and businesses have been great partners with the city and have done impressive work. I also feel that perhaps looking at certain design standards could be a good idea, if we do it in the right way with collaboration from the downtown association, community members, developers, city staff, and experts in the appropriate areas. The consultant is looking at the streetscape and other aspects, which will definitely help. Ultimately, I believe everyone on the council and many in the community would like to see an overall vision for the downtown. However, I do not feel a moratorium has the right way to accomplish this. Why? We are in the midst of hiring an economic development specialist, I feel it would hinder this person. Owners choosing between Musco and Pullman could be convinced that we are not in favor of additional businesses. Having additional mixed-use business downtown with housing reduces our city sprawl and cuts down the cost to extend asphalt and services, creating a more walkable city in our core, which provides additional revenue to our businesses downtown. If we put a moratorium into effect, we could negate these positive aspects. Through my own master's degree in community design by regional planning, I can tell you this much, whatever we choose cannot be done in haste. That is where mistakes are made, creates bad relations with business owners, developers, and community members. It must be done in good faith, with collaboration of stakeholders, not a top-down approach. It should be properly informed and trust should be fostered so that everyone in the city of Pullman knows that we went through the proper channels, made the best decision for everyone in the city. Lastly, things may not move quickly or be done how we want. Believe me, some of my ideas from a decade ago are only now being implemented, i.e. Facebook. But we should study, discuss our ideas, provide feedback, maybe nudge a little, but also trust our staff in the process that we have right now. So in closing, I just urge my fellow council members, whichever way we decide to take, definitely keep those points in mind. Thank you.
Can I mention something about, you know, in haste? I, I will say that I'm probably less in haste right now than I was earlier when Councilmember Sorensen first brought this up. I, I know that legally we have the ability to, to put a moratorium and then do a public hearing, but as I look at option two, schedule and hold a public hearing, I think that would help us not do something in haste if we did that before a moratorium or not, right? Because then we could hear from residents, business owners, developers, whatever, and I think that might be a good way to go. So, I mean, I would, I would strongly urge option two, and to, to have that ready and then do a public hearing. That's, that's what I would recommend.
Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything written, so I'll probably go all over the place, but I, first of all, I, I feel very strongly that we need to define exactly what our concerns are, specifics. What are they? What, what exactly are we looking to accomplish with this moratorium? I also don't think the moratorium is the right thing to do, I think it's a bad message that Pullman is putting out, it is not welcoming, it is completely incongruent with everything we're trying to work toward, with having people want to come here, be downtown, develop downtown. I'm downtown a lot, my husband and I eat downtown a lot, I shop downtown, there are people downtown and they enjoy it. And we have business owners who are continuing to open new businesses, and I want to encourage that, not discourage it. And I do believe also that our community members and partners that have been mentioned, 2040 Downtown, Towngown, Chamber of Commerce, all of our business and community partners should be included in this discussion before we take an extreme, in my opinion, action as a moratorium. I think that it is hasty and that it will create more bad feeling than good overall with our public.
Pat next, and then we have Eileen.
I agree, Ann. And I think we're all about appearances, and how downtown looks is a draw for people. And cityscape or streetscape, whatever we wanna call it, is part of that appeal, curb appeal, if you will. But I think those are things we can accomplish without alienating the existing businesses that are downtown, that are very concerned about the, the effects of a moratorium with design standards that are going to be imposed on them as existing businesses, and how that is going to curb their ability to continue to do business and cost them money. And I don't think that's what we wanna do. You know, the perception is that, okay, Pullman's closing up for business because they don't wanna deal with new people. But in reality, in the, in the central business district, in the C2, even in the C2 district, where we're talking about from the Lumberyard to Gladish to the Alumni Center and Mackenzie, I guess, is the last border, what's the potential in there for really new businesses that we would impose a moratorium on, you know, what they're wanting to do? To me, I mean, it's kind of minimal. I don't see a lot of open land for development out there, which is what we're talking about in terms of identifying a moratorium. I may be looking at it very simplistically, but what are we looking at here?
Yeah, and could I just add one thing, too?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I forgot to say, I do wish, I do, I would wish that we would give, we did spend the money, let's give BDS a chance and, and talk to them, they are setting up individual meetings with us right now. And I don't know if you have accepted their invitation yet, but they want to meet with community members, council members, and influencers in the community. And if we're paying for it, then why not let them at least present to us? I don't really know what they're going to come up with yet. I'm not saying that there isn't room for improvement, I just think that the process can, we can go about it much differently.
There is absolutely room for improvement, and you're right, and it's the process.
Eileen, you have one.
I just wanted to, to point out, and this is an ongoing frustration of mine, in that there's been a lot of great work, Alison Fisher's done some fantastic work liaising with the downtown association, and that the actual on-the-ground research is there are 110 storefronts in the central business district, there are three vacancies, three vacancies out of 110, and that's actual on-the-ground numbers done by a human being who went around and counted. So the notion that, that there's no room for challenging our current assumptions, there's room to challenge our current assumptions. Pullman's doing very well compared to where we were in 2008, when some of these other things that were mentioned in the packet occurred. There were reasons for that in 2008. It's time for us to be a little more contemporary in our thinking.
Dan, did you have another comment before we go back to Al? Okay.
Al? I'm glad everybody's talking, this is awesome. I, I have a few things to say in reference to some of the comments made. Pat, in reference to your putting, saying that we're putting a moratorium on business in Pullman, it has nothing to do with anybody opening a business in Pullman.
I get that, it's the perception, it's the perception.
Then they need to understand what we're talking about, and we need to make sure that they do understand. It has nothing to do with that. Okay? Ann, your point about BDS and them doing the project, that's the whole point, let's wait and see what they come up with. How can we be responsible to let other things happen now, and then they come back with a plan that we cannot implement?
But do we need to do that via moratorium? I mean, we have checks and balances along the way.
It's a temporary thing, it's a checks and balance already, to stop it until we get the report, that's all it is. Six months from now is really close to the time period that they're gonna get the report to us. And if I recall, Pete, it was like right after the beginning, January something, okay?
Yeah, I mean, we're all talking about the same period.
About the same time period. And then back to the businesses and the building owners in downtown Pullman, we need them to buy in. Anything that we do to help improve downtown is going to improve their business. You don't improve your business without, for lack of a better thing, putting a fresh cone of paint on, or updating this, or updating that, and making things inviting. You have to invest in your business. And if, if we come up with the master plan for downtown, which we're working on, then those things need to be bought in by the building owners and the business owners. Change is hard, I understand that, but in the long run, this is what's best for the entire city of Pullman, its residents and visitors, and bringing people in.
I'd like one more comment. So I, Pat, you had mentioned, maybe it was a simplistic- view. I don't think it was simplistic, but it's not just about the developers. So even though there might not be a lot of space, I mean, we are looking at, you know, sidewalks and all this. So just an example of where we, as a council, unanimously decided, no, let's not talk about the speed limit downtown, because it might have been a great idea, and we could have gone forward with discussing this at 20 miles an hour. We even halted the brakes and said, let's, let's wait, because we've got this master plan in the works, and they, they may have a different opinion, right? They may say something entirely different, 25 is fine. Or, or maybe they would have said 20 mi, 20 miles an hour was fine, right? So, so I think that's just one example, not to be disingenuous, you know, and, and we're putting rules on other people. And, I mean, we, we at one point at least saw the value in, in that just we as a council.
So obviously, our staff would like to know exactly which direction to pursue here. We've had some really good discussion tonight. And we've had some options presented to us. We've also had some guidance from our attorney regarding the right way to do something, to make sure there's public input and things of that nature. So.
I've got one other thing. You know, we're talking about, we have to declare some kind of an emergency. An emergency, like Pat was saying, you know, there are obvious emergencies. But I personally feel that it is an emergency to make sure that the character, the integrity, the appearance of our downtown and not being responsible to take care of that is an emergency. And I would include that with the other things besides what Brandon was talking about. I think that also constitute an emergency in a temporary way.
And I would counter by saying that I think that's disrespectful to our planning commission, our board of adjustment, and our city staff, because they work hard every day to try to make Pullman look the best it can. And so, again, I think we're looking at a very extreme idea here for something that may be able to be changed in a different way.
So let's build a cap.
So somebody's going to have to make a motion on what you want to do, and then we'll figure out where we're going from that standpoint.
I, for one, am not interested in usurping the skill and the expertise of our staff and our administrators in terms of making recommendations back to us based on this discussion as to the best way to proceed. I'm not sure a moratorium is the best way to proceed. I think the master plan is a good start. I don't know how much development we are going to have in the next six months, that a moratorium would accomplish anything.
Except going back to what you said about the perception.
Exactly. And that is, that is, I mean, perception is someone else's reality. And I don't care as much as we know and you know, it's, it's whatever somebody else believes is what is reality in their minds, so.
Mimosa could be torn down and built upon in the next six months.
So if perception is, you know, whatever, could we, could we hold a public hearing and let it out? Let people say what their reality is, then?
Well, that would be if we determine that the moratorium is the direction that we want to go. Otherwise, you have to have a, a specific purpose for a public hearing. Correct.
So I'll make a motion that we.
We don't have an ad. This is not an action, is it?
I can make a motion anytime I want.
It's a regular meeting. It's a regular meeting. You can take action on anything. Can I answer the question about the, about the public hearing? So a public hearing on a moratorium is required by law. But you can take public, you've done that many times, where you have noticed that you're going to be taking public testimony on a topic or something you're considering. You knew that at any time.
Right.
And we should have been already doing that in the last, like, week. I mean, I know I've been approached by many people discussing this, so.
So basically, you'd be setting a hearing.
Well, wouldn't the hearing, because a hearing is late?
Depending on where this motion goes.
Yeah. Well, yes. If it's an ordinance, public hearing, or, or a moratorium, public hearing, if you simply want to gather public input, simply publishing, notifying the public that you're going to put it on the agenda for there to be public input on this topic. And you do your three minutes, or however many minutes you provide, and have people come up and talk.
So Al, you said you wanted to make a motion?
I do want to make a motion. I made a motion that we create a temporary moratorium on new construction in downtown Pullman in the central business district area as defined, and that I would direct staff to come back with the pertinent information for us to vote or not vote on it. I do agree with Brandon also that the second option, I think, is a good one. And I think, I certainly want public input on this. I'm not doing this because I want to do it. I'm doing this for the general public, and I believe that they should be involved, which will happen with the public hearing.
Since we have some commentary, let's get back to the crux of the motion. Are you saying option two?
Did you hear what I said, Laura, to start with?
Create a temporary moratorium on new construction in the central business district as defined where?
Yeah.
In the contract with BDS. How's that?
So we're not talking about the full C2. We're just talking about the downtown area specifically.
Study area. And direct staff to come back with.
The ordinance or whatever.
Using option two or option one, the resolution of the ordinance?
Then we'd have a public hearing on the option.
Well, we're going to have a public hearing, no matter what.
Right. It's the timing of it. Do you, two, two months after you impose the moratorium?
Okay, so whichever the option was where we take the public input first.
Okay. So that's option two.
Okay. Confusing.
Okay. So we've had a motion. Do we have a sound?
I don't know what I would be seconding, so.
What Laura said.
Okay. I think we need public input.
So the motion is to create a temporary moratorium on new construction in the central business district as defined in the BDS study, and direct staff to come back with the documentation, documents necessary to enact a moratorium using a public hearing prior to the adoption of an ordinance.
Prior to adoption. I, I would second that. Okay.
Now comes the vote. And I know we have the.
You have a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. Still writing.
Okay. And because we don't have a screen while people can see you vote, we're going to be doing this by vote. All those in favor, would you raise your hand, saying yes? Those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
I see two. Those opposed to that motion, please raise your hand and say no. Those have, so the motion does not.
Do you have an abstention?
I have, there is an abstention. Yes.
And what the basis for the abstention?
I have a substitute motion that I would like to make. It's not valid?
No, you need, you need to vote on the motion, unless you're.
Okay, then put me in the, put me in the no's, because I want to substitute.
Okay.
Okay. So the motion was defeated.
I think I know where you're going with this. It's a public.
Okay. So now would you say your, your, your motion now?
To have a public meeting for input on the possibility of establishing a moratorium on new construction in the downtown business core as defined by the BDS contract.
Would you insert the word temporary moratorium?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure that's correct. So let's get that one.
What was the, yeah, a moratorium, what was the area?
The BDS.
This is the BDS definition.
And moratorium on all construction or new construction?
New.
New construction.
And it was temporary moratorium.
Yes.
Okay. And we'll wait, before we get a sound, we'll make sure we have it sent back. So basically, you're calling for a public hearing?
No, I'm not calling for a public meeting.
Public meeting, discussion. Okay.
So what I have down is a motion to have, hold a public meeting to take input on the possibility of establishing a temporary moratorium on new construction in the central business district as defined in the BDS study.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do I hear a second of that? I got a second. Okay.
Who is this?
Brandon.
Oh, Brandon. Yeah. Okay. He's our second tonight.
How does my sign of the side look like?
Second, Laura.
Now, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those in favor, think about it, saying yes, and raise your hand.
Yes.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Have your hands.
Did we get everybody? I'm usually the ride and drag.
No. I'm sorry. I only kind of, oh, so it was seven. Okay.
Seven. So that measure passed. So now the staff can put things together for meeting in the future to deal with.
When do you want it to come back?
Let's hear, soon.
When's the next?
The next council meeting will be August 6th, 5th, 6th of August.
That's the night of National Night Out. So right now, there's only a couple items on that agenda to allow for attending the events that night. So I wonder, maybe we do it on the, on the 6th and do the 7th as a special meeting.
What other dates are available to us?
Well, you have a following one, which is the 13th, right? 13th would be open.
And that would give us time to get the word out.
Right. And that would get people back in the community as well. So August 13th?
Yep. I would have trouble being at that.
I won't be here for either of those dates. I will be back in Nebraska.
Would you have somebody from your office available?
I think what I would do is I would listen to the.
Speakerphone.
To the, yeah, I can, yeah, I can either call in on a speakerphone. But since it's a public hearing, you would just be taking the public comment.
Just taking comments anyway. We're not going to be taking any action. We're taking public comment.
Well, action could be brought. We can bring any action at any meeting.
Yes. You would need, and if you wanted to adopt an ordinance, though, you would need to have that ordinance drafted in, in advance.
But again, you're taking public comment.
Correct.
In order to draft.
To come up with a draft.
Yes.
As opposed to.
I just want to be clear that we can come up and make a motion at any time.
Yes. At a, as long as you do it at a, at a regular meeting. So if you hold this on a Wednesday or some other alternate date, that would need, the possibility for action would need to be on the agenda.
And we have a meeting scheduled for Pullman City Council every single Tuesday, every week of the year.
Unless canceled.
Unless canceled. And again, your next meeting is, is August 6th, and this one here, we're talking about is August 13th. Okay? Now, with that, is there any other new business to come before council tonight? Saying none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Move a second. All those in favor, think about it, be saying aye. Any opposed?